The head of the committee that is charged with overseeing the process of the the search process for a new police chief in Beacon. What's happening there? Just what's an update for folks?
Uh, well, uh, where we are at now, um, we had surveys out and they're still going out. They'll be out until the fourth and we have to extend it. We will. You can find the surveys at, uh, the city of Beacon website. I believe we have some surveys at City Hall and at the library.
Okay.
And, uh, I think the, the thing that we want to do is we want to get feedback from the community. We want to hear what their opinions are and what they're looking for and achieve. Do they believe in having a chief? Any, I mean, any feedback in the community is important. And I think it will, it will inform how we conduct our search and what we're looking for.
And there is an actual search firm that the, that the city hired. Yes. Specializes in law enforcement hires.
Yes.
They're, you're doing the, the search itself as far as the, the nuts and bolts of placing ads and whatnot. Your committee is overseeing the whole process from Beacon's perspective.
Right, right. Um, after the survey is done, um, he's been collecting data. People have been turning it in and I would encourage people to tell their friends or neighbors to please take part in a survey, especially the communities of color. We really need to hear everyone's voice and not just one segment of the community. Um, once we get the data in and once we get all the information in, and we can pretty much figure out what the community needs. And we can sort of relate, we can relay that to the head of the, uh, the search firm. And then the, the search begins.
Right. And once, I believe, once you get down to, um, a handful of finalists, the public will come back in again so that there's public input when you've only got, you know, two or three or four candidates left. You know, really there's public input throughout the whole process, it seems like.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I think it's very important and I think that part of the interview process and having the public being involved in that is crucial. It's crucial. This is a, this is a very important time, you know, globally, you know, especially in this country. And we want to get this right, you know, and we need to figure out what we can do to make policing better or make public service better, you know? Uh, and hopefully we can find a chief that is forward thinking and has experience dealing with diverse communities like ours.
Okay. So then, uh, kind of a separate track, the, the council also passed, uh, a really lengthy resolution, uh, week before last, or though, I guess about 10 days ago now. With some, you know, some pretty significant policy changes that will be implemented within the police department. Some I think can be implemented now and then some are as the new chief is hired. Can you talk a little bit, give kind of a brief overview of what it was that the council adopted?
Which is basically us looking, you know, reviewing how we can do better. Cause I, I think we can, you know, we can all do better. How can we reach different communities? How can? How can we stop, um, people of color being afraid of the police or having the fear of having a negative, you know, encounter with the police? How, how can we, how can we flip that around? I'm not saying we can do it in a day. But I think we need to figure out how we can make the steps, you know, towards that happening. We also have to examine, you know, what, what it's like for the, for the officers on the force. Um, I think that mental health checks are very important. And I think that it should be more frequent, you know, I, it's a very high stress job. So it just makes sense that there would be regular mental health check-ins for our police officers. And I just want to say one thing, um, I, it's a lot of chatter going on about our position with the, you know, with the police department. We are not anti-police. We are not defunding the police. We are, we don't hate the police. We want to work with them. We want to help them be better. And I think that's what this resolution is about. It's actually making the force work better for everybody. And, and when I say everybody, I mean, the entire community.
Right.
That's what we're working for. So, um, for all of you out there who've been saying that we wanted to fund the police, you are misinformed.
Okay. Um, that, that kind of leads into my next question. I would wanted to ask what kind of feedback you've gotten? We could say on that particular resolution that was just adopted or on the whole reform process. You know, feedback that you've gotten, good or bad from the community?
Um, uh, there were several members of the community that were very grateful that we passed this resolution. Others, even in public comments, you know, accused us of playing the race card, which is just, I, you know, I'm not even going to dignify that with an answer. I've had people call, write to me, call me a Marxist, a communist, all in the same letter, by the way. And I don't know where this anger comes from, you know? We, we are not trying to hurt the police. We want the police department to work with us and work well with the community. So this resolution, um, it's important. It's important how we just look at the way policing is done. I'm not accusing anyone in the police department of any particular activity. But, you know, like I said earlier, we can all do better in our jobs. I can do better at my job. There's a lot of things I can do better than I'm working to do better. So we're trying to help. We're trying to make this, this city function in a way that's a little more harmonious. And, um, judging by, from some of the emails I've gotten, you know, I mean, it's pretty angry stuff. And, uh, you know, it's, it's kind of, I mean, I will admit to you, it's hard to take. It's hard to read that stuff about, you know, read things about yourself, you know? Looking at social media and, um, having someone on some board suggest that, you know, we'd be shot in the head, you know? So, you know, I would just suggest to rational thinking people out there who may not agree with me, choose your words carefully and, you know, we, this is, that is not the kind of behavior we need right now.
How can you address the anger? I mean, when you get that, you know, negative feedback like that, is there some way that you, that you see this all resolving itself? So that, um, we don't have, you know, sides, so to speak, and beacon who are, uh, you know, butting heads with one another? And you know, is there, is there, is, is the hire of the new chief, you know, something that could be a unifying act?
I would hope so. I, I would hope so. You know, in terms of, um, writing the, you know, writing the, the hateful emails or people send them to me. I mean, I think that that's a symptom of a larger problem. And that is a, and this is generational. When for generations, we have not effectively talked about race in a serious manner where one side gets offended and walks away. Um, I've had people say to me, you know, why are they, meaning, you know, the protesters? Why are they bringing this stuff up again? And, you know, this stuff is my daily life. This stuff is me getting in my car and getting on the highway and really being conscious of the speed limit, you know, being conscious of, you know, are my, are my headlights on or, you know, am I doing everything right? What if I get stopped? What do I do? So it's not just this stuff. It's a conversation that is long overdue. And I think that there are a lot of people who just need to be brave enough to have the conversation and be able to have a conversation where you're going to hear things that make you uncomfortable. You should be uncomfortable because I wake up and get in my car and I'm uncomfortable. There are young kids out there who walk around the street and they're uncomfortable. If they see a police officer, they're uncomfortable and that is not, it's not right. It's not normal. So, I mean, I'm not going to see it in my lifetime. And it's disappointing because when I was a child, I thought that, you know, things would be a lot better. But it turns out that there, it's a lot worse and it's a lot worse and people don't speak to each other. Or, and, and speak to each other respectfully, you know? And if you don't know something about another person's race or whatever, ask questions and don't be afraid to be wrong. Being wrong is not a sin, you know? So the emails are just a byproduct of a bigger problem that we're too afraid to address.
Okay. Now I know the council had, uh, it's been probably a month and a half, two months now. I mean, the council had a, uh, a forum on policing where people were able to share some stories and speak pretty frankly about some experiences they'd had. I don't know if there are plans for, you know, anything like that to get, to go, you know, moving forward, perhaps after, uh, the chief's position is filled, you know, to create some dialogue, things like that.
I mean, I think engagement has to continue. Engagement has to be part of the process. I mean, for too long, people of color in Beacon, and I'm, I've been here 11 years and I'm just relaying from what I've seen and what I've heard that there needs to be an ongoing conversation. You know, there's a community of underserved people and that's all races. And that's another, that's another subject for another day. But, um, I would like to see the forums continue because I think that it was productive. Um, unfortunately, the, the police union didn't see it that way. And, you know, it, it sort of started a, you know, um, they, it's, it's sort of started a firestorm of just hate. And, you know, since then they've mended fences with the city. But that particular letter, it, it, I'm still a little salty about that one.
Yeah. Okay. Um, well, let's switch gears for just a minute then. Um, you've been talking about some of the other stuff that's going on with the city council. Like I said, for the longest time, development was the, the biggest issue here. I mean, you couldn't go to a council meeting without hearing about it in public comment or, uh, you know, in, you know, laws and resolutions and whatnot. Um, the council's done a lot as far as reworking the zoning in Beacon. I think you've got a couple more things still on your to-do list. We said there's the historic district. What's happening there?
We're still working on it. I believe there's a public hearing coming up. Um, this is a hard one, you know? We want to get this right because we also don't want to make it so onerous for owners of historic buildings, you know, to sort of fit in, you know, with the guidelines or whatever, whatever we're trying to put together. Um, so it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be hard. It's not, this is not an easy one. I, I don't like the fact that, you know, the process would be onerous for homeowners. You know, I, I think that's not fair to them. Um, we're going to talk this through. And if, if it takes us months to get this right, fine, but let's get it right. Getting it right is more important than rushing it through.
And you said something to me about municipal broadband. I know that's a very, uh, any discussion there is in its very early stages. I've heard some talk on the city council side and also on the school district side about how, uh, you know, necessary that is. Or, or pardon me, how necessary internet access is, especially given what's going on with the pandemic and the fact that, you know, we may be all virtual for who knows how long.
Right. I mean, I mean, I hate to say a good thing has come out of this, but it's illuminated the fact that there are families who don't have sufficient internet access. Even families who are doing well, you know, have still inadequate, um, internet access. There are some families have zero. And if we're going to be teaching our children virtually, you know, that puts a lot of people behind the eight ball and it puts them at a disadvantage. And that is the last thing we need right now. So we need to really find a solution for municipal broadband. I, I'm, it's appalling to me. It's, it really is. It's appalling that the internet access is so poor. And I think it should be treated as a public utility, like your electric bill, your gas bill, whatever, you know? This is a, this is a public service and it should be available to everyone and not just the people who can afford it.
Got you. Um, I've got a question that was emailed in from a reader, so I'm going to go to that. Um, this writer is saying, how do we convince our police force not to put on their rottweiler mask with their uniforms? Or is this the only way they have of dealing with the danger they face, whether perceived or real? I'm not sure if ro-
Yeah, I'm, I haven't seen that personally, so I, I, I don't, I don't know how to respond to that. I've never seen.
I'm not sure what the, what the person's referring to as a rottweiler mask. Um, okay. So, yeah, I'm not sure what that is. I've got one more I'm going to go to. Just give me one second. And this is the question I mentioned to you earlier. How does the city expect the police department to expand its coverage to include two new developments? I'm referring to Beacon Views and Townson Avenue, especially Beacon Views as it is definitely going to cause traffic problems and calls from residents already established in the area.
Okay. Um, this is not in my area of expertise and I think, um, I think that question can be better answered by the, uh, the police department. And, um, I would, I would suggest that, you know, if you have concerns about this, you should contact the traffic committee and even attend their meetings. And I think they're still virtual. And I think that you can ask those questions directly. And I think that you would get a better answer than I can give you right now in this moment.
Okay. While we're there, talk about some of the, the other committees, the volunteer committees that are, uh, you know, work with the city. I know that there's been some talk at the council meetings, um, volunteers are needed to fill out, uh, various committees. Human rights has been one of them. I think there may be others that have open seats.
Yeah, we are, we are currently, um, trying to fill, uh, we already have filled a bunch of seats on the, uh, on the human rights committee. And I think that that's a really important committee, especially in the time that we're living in. Um, I would like for that committee to be more involved in oversight and being a place to go for people who have like, uh, let's say disputes with their landlord or they're having trouble, yeah, they're having trouble with their landlord or they have a complaint about the police department or any other department. I would like the human rights committee, you know, sort of be that place where they can go to and feel safe about reporting what's happening. And in turn, that committee can file a complaint and then stay on top of it. And, you know, make sure that it's being investigated, make sure that these complaints are being looked into and not pushed to the side. So I would, I would love to give that committee a little more power in what they do.
Okay. Um, okay. Anybody who's out there, if there are any questions, uh, we have not gotten anything in yet. So Terry's here and he's wide open. So if anybody's got any questions about police, about anything happening at the city council level, send them in now. Terry, tell me, um, what's, what's the timeline, uh, for the hiring process? I know it's all tentative, but give me a, a kind of a, a baseline of what we're looking at for a new police chief.
It, it's hard to say, um, because this is, this is a totally new process to me. Um, I'm, I'm thinking once we get the results of the survey and, and this, and the, uh, the job description goes out to various groups. Um, I would like to see this done by the end of the year or even sooner. Uh, but I don't know. I mean, because like this, this whole process could not bear, you know, may not bear fruit. We may not find a candidate that we like. And, you know, I, I've stressed to my fellow committee members that we are not married to the idea of finding a chief within this process. You know, I don't want to, I don't want us to settle. I want us to find someone that is going to serve the city of Beacon well. And if that doesn't come up in this interview process, then we have to go to plan B. Don't ask me what plan B is. I'm not sure what that is yet. But, you know, I just want everyone to make sure that they, while they're doing this, they ask the really tough questions. And they're very firm and direct, you know? And I, I just want us to get this right. So, um, just want to reassure everyone who's out there listening. You know, we may not necessarily find a chief here. Um, I'm not, I'm hoping we do, but, you know, we're, we're not bound to finding one within this process.
Right. And plan B, I would assume is, you know, to continue with the interim chief. The, the council named a new interim, uh, Lieutenant Frost, uh, last week as well.
Right. Um, yeah. I mean, we'd have to talk to him about it and see if that's something that he wants to entertain. Um, and we can go in that direction. I won't, you know, I, I, yeah, I would, I would rather not speak for Lieutenant, um, sorry, Chief Frost at this, at this point in time.
Okay. Um, well, Teresa, I don't have anything else. Actually, here we go. We've got a question. Once city council meetings go back to taking place in person, will the public still be able to access them on Zoom?
Um, I don't know. Um, that's a question, um, that might be answered by the city administrator. It's a good question. I, I really, I, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know how we're going to go about this, you know? This is, uh, you know, flying by the seat of our pants. I, I would hope that Zoom would be a possibility going forward. I think that would be, that would be very helpful, you know? I, I actually may suggest that to the city administrator.
Okay. I think the, um, the mayor mentioned that the meetings may go back to in-person sometime after Labor Day, but I don't know if any of that is, is, uh, set in stone yet or nothing's set in stone these days.
Nothing's set in stone, you know, there's, uh, supposed to be a second wave of this coming. So, you know, it is a day by day kind of thing. I mean, it's, it's frightening. It really is frightening because like, you know, nobody knows anything. Or as the famous screenwriter William Goldman says, nobody here knows nothing, you know? So we're trying to figure this out as we go along. I don't know if it's going to happen after Labor Day. I have health issues that make me a little more compromised the most. So, um, there is a hesitance on my part, you know? I do pick and choose my spots when I go to places where there are a lot of people. Um, I can't speak for my other council members. Uh, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm stuck in a really hard position, you know? I would love to be in person. I liked, there was a thrill about going to the meetings and being in person. And this new reality is just not working for me, you know? I mean, it's fun in the beginning, but now it's just like, okay, I, I need to see people. I need to look people in the eye. I need to, you know, when people are making public comments, even though it's, you know, against whatever we're for, you know, I need to see that person's face. I need to look in their eyes. I need the, you know, I just need that, that human contact. So I, I, I don't know. I, I hope we can, I hope we get past this in the, within the next six or seven months.
You know, I wonder how, how much tougher is all the police, the divisiveness, the, the, you know, you, you know, hatred, this, this, the, the bad feelings that you talked about? How much tougher is all of that because it's happening within the context of this pandemic where we can hardly even, like you said, have a face-to-face conversation with someone?
It, it's, it's difficult. It's, you know, it, it's hard. I mean, there are, I would call them agents of chaos out there who get on social media and just sort of pour gasoline on a, on a simmering fire. Uh, I think that we've all just been basically confined to our homes for so long. I mean, people have cabin fever and they're doing things or saying things and behaving in ways that they would not normally behave or things, saying things they would not normally say. So it's hard to gauge. I mean, it, it is difficult. I will admit it's difficult. I mean, the former mayor, you know, in a, in a, in a post asked us to come from behind our masks and show ourselves. And, you know, what do you, what do you do with that? You know, I mean, what, how do you respond to that? I mean, we're in a, this is a global pandemic, um, you know, it, it's, it's hard. It's hard. And I, I think that I, I give people a little more leeway now because, you know, it, it's not easy to just to be stuck indoors and having to be socially distant. Socially distant wasn't a, wasn't a thing a year ago. And so we're, we're all just trying to figure this out.
And we, we'll probably wind up here. We're right around our 30-minute mark. Um, but I would, you've been vocal in the council meetings when you have, uh, comments talking about mask wearing, uh, how important it is. Um, actually I see one more question that come, that's come through. We'll take that in a second. But you say that again for everybody to hear because you've made comments more than once about mask wearing and how important it is.
Sweet Jesus, how hard, how hard is it to wear a mask? Come on. I mean, the fact that it's been politicized, you know, higher up the, uh, levels of government, um, is ridiculous. I mean, I think if we just put the mask on, just obey the protocols, it's fine. It, you know, it won't make you, uh, any less of a Republican or, or a libertarian or Democrat or whatever. Just put the mask on, you know? If you're near people and you can't socially distance, just put it on. It's not a statement of your character. It's not going to hurt you. You're not going to melt. And, you know, I, I just, I just don't get it. I think it's, it's silly to politicize science. Man, it's just the dumbest thing I've ever heard of. Just put the damn mask on, for crying out loud.
Um, let me switch gears one more time here. This is a question that came through from a listener. I'm surprised at the idea that the Human Rights Commission might be used to oversee disputes. Is there a way to use that commission to develop more dialogue? Open forums to talk about all those uncomfortable issues like the Race Unity Committee in Poughkeepsie?
Um, yes. I mean, I, I, the, the Human Rights Committee, uh, those are open meetings. So you can make, you know, if, if you, as a private citizen, you can make those suggestions at a meeting, you know, I think that they'd be open to that conversation, you know? And again, we're, we're still trying to figure this out and it's, it's an ever-evolving thing. So if you have input, I would say go to a Human Rights Committee meeting and make suggestions. And I, I think that they'd be open, open to listening. You know, this is something that's, that was laying dormant for a long time. But, uh, I think it's necessary to have a Human Rights Commission at this point.
Here's another one. Has the council had many discussions with police officers to hear what they have to say? I would presume that's about the reform and the, you know, the resolution and whatnot.
Yes, yes, we've talked to them. I mean, how can a civilian talk about reform without asking another police officer? And I don't want people to assume that they're the bad guys, you know, always. And, you know, I, again, it's all about dialogue and it's all about discussion. You don't have to agree with each other, but, you know, we ask, okay, what is this experience like? You know, what do you do when X, Y, and Z happens? And we actually, uh, before the former chief quit, we were asking those questions. We were asking about protocols. We were asking what, you know, we wanted to find out, you know, how the department operates. So we've had discussions and we've had discussions after, uh, the chief quit.
And it, it should be noted also, um, And it, it should be noted also, um. There, there was the resolution that the council passed, but this is not just a beacon thing because at the same time you have a state mandated. Reform plan that's due in April next spring that covers a lot of the same ground. So, uh, you know, every, every municipality across New York is doing the same kind of work.
Right, and, you know, we're looking at. Those guidelines as the bare minimum. You know, uh, all municipalities are not the same. Sure, what, what works for Beacon may not work for Fishkill or Cold Spring for whatever reason. Um. We want to do what's best for this community and our community. And. You know. We're, we're, we're working towards that. I, I think we are working towards that. It's not, it's not an easy fix and I think that everyone. I hope everyone doesn't think that it's going to be an easy fix. It takes time. But, um, you need a little patience. We're going to get through this. I had, I had, actually I had someone say, well, we're tired of waiting, we're tired of being patient. And. You know, yeah, I'm tired of being patient too, but. You know, you want to make things work well and not satisfy. The instant need for gratification or resolution, so you have to be patient.
I feel, I feel like a comment like that, that's the, some of that is the effect of the pandemic because we are so. Everyone is so stressed out. Yeah, we're probably losing our patience and we're losing, you know, we're making some, uh. We're not all thinking straight because. This has just been a heck of a six months now, you know, this is, it's been so difficult on everybody. That to try to tackle these massive global, like you said at the beginning, global and national issues. In the midst of all this, it's really challenging.
Yeah, this is foreign territory for everybody. So I, I think it's imperative that we are a little patient with each other. You know, even the people that we disagree with. You know, I, I try to be patient even with the, the people that send me the hate email, you know, it's. You know, I. They're coming from a different place that I don't understand. And, uh. You know, if they were willing, yeah, I would, I would want them to, all right, help me figure out where you're coming from and, and we can have a conversation and we can talk.
You mentioned a minute ago the former chief. Were you surprised when, uh, the chief and the Captain Fredericks, when they, uh, retired? That was, I guess it was announced in, in June and they retired at the beginning of July.
Yeah, I, I, when I heard it, I'm like. Are you kidding me? All I asked him was, uh. You know, what time of day do you make stops, uh, on South Cedar? Uh, just kidding, but no, half kidding. Um. Yeah, it, it took me by surprise, you know, I, I. I, I, I don't know. I have, I have no words, you know, I, I have no words to say, but, um. I, I wish the chief, the former chief and the captain well. And, you know, now we get to move forward to the 21st century.
Um, here's another question coming in. What do you know about the economic impact on Beacon businesses as a result of the pandemic?
Um, strictly anecdotal, um. People are hurting. It's, it's hard. I mean, it's, it's hard. You know, you don't know what you're dealing with. In terms of the pandemic. Uh, you, 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 you want to open up the stores, you want to get the economy back open. But you don't want to. You don't want this virus to spread if you do that, you know, um. Some, some folks have told me that they, they may go out of business, I mean. It, the comic book store. That, you know, people rallied around and. You know, the poor, you know, poor guy found a partner to keep the store open. And I'm, I'm not sure, I think it might have been sometime last year and, you know, they had the, they had to close, you know. And it's sad because, you know, it's, you know, I. I discovered that that was a place where kids went to, you know, they had a game room in the back. And, you know, they were all hanging out and it was. It was a very useful part of this community and. And now it's gone. Hopefully they'll open up, but again. But i- i- it's tough. I mean, it's tough. I, I feel for all, you know, for all the business owners. You know, who. You know, who are living by a very, or on a very thin thread right now and. I have no clue how to help them and that really. Yeah, I get, and that gets me.
Okay, um, two more questions that have come through. How involved is the mayor in this process? And I think that refers to the police reform. And I guess the, with the, what they're asking is, does the mayor have any more or less responsibility than the rest of the city council?
In terms of the reform?
Yeah, the reform of the police reforms.
Um, he has involvement. He doesn't have more or less. We are, you know, he is one of seven.
Okay. Um. And what would you say to people who are wary of so many changes, who may be apprehensive about the city council's expertise? When it comes to police and criminal justice?
It is scary. Changes, you know, it's very scary and I, I understand the fear. But. You have. A significant amount of people in your community. Who don't feel like their needs are being addressed or served. So we need to change things. I mean, change is difficult. It's, it's messy. I mean, even the smallest amount of change is messy, but i- i- it. It's necessary sometimes. I, I, I think that we need to rethink how we do things, you know, we live in a different world right now. And. I would say the people who are fearful. Don't give in to your worst fears. And if you are fearful, talk to somebody, talk to your council member, talk to. Somebody, talk to somebody that you're not familiar with, but just sort of, just. Ask questions, be inquisitive and don't submit. To your fear or your worst angels.
And on that note. All the council members have email addresses that are up on the city website where they can be contacted.
Our email addresses are there, our telephone numbers are there and. You know, we can be contacted anytime. I tell my constituents all the time. If you got something, call me. Just call me. I prefer it if you didn't call me. Before 9:00 AM, but, but, you know, call me, call me or email me and I, I'll gladly take your call and we can talk.
Okay, very good. I think we're at about the 40 minute mark, so Teresa, I think we're ready to wrap up here. Is that right?
Yeah, thank you so much for staying a little longer with us. Uh, we, uh. We have a couple of questions left unanswered, so apologize for that, but we're running out of time.
Um, if people have questions for me, they can send those questions to me. And I can, and I can answer them.
That was a great wrap up, so yeah, calls, emails, um, over to the city council. Thank you so much for taking the time tonight. Really.
Thank you for asking me.
Yeah, and we'll be posting this, um, on YouTube tomorrow, so whoever, you know, anybody that didn't make it tonight can access it starting tomorrow.
Hey Terry, thank you. Um, I always say to people who do this. It can't be easy getting these rapid fire questions and you don't necessarily know what's coming, so I appreciate you taking the time. Answering all the questions, having thoughtful answers, so thank you, sir.
No problem. I've lost hair. I'm sitting here.
That's what we do.
Peace, stay strong, be safe.
All right, thank you both.